Everyone for joining and thank you for bearing with the elevator being out. Of course, it goes out as we need it tonight, but thank you for making it up here. Before we get into, Carol, can I have a call for Corin please?
Sure.
Here.
Here, Ms. Aragon, here. Mr. Mike Hilly, Mr. Perigini.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. I ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome. We have quite a few presentations this evening, so bear with us, but I know as board members, we look forward to this time of year because we get to recognize so many, not just our retirees that we hate to see leave, but it's impressive the years of service they have with us. But tonight, we have students here with a lot of different presentations. So this is quite frankly, for us, a great highlight and a chance to just recognize some very important folks here. So thank you for being here. That being said, we're going to start with the recognition of this valedictorian and salutatorian.
Dr. Gad, could you please come to the podium?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It is challenges, especially as a self-directed learner. To anyone who meets Clyde, it is easy to see his maturity, affability, and genuine caring demeanor. Clyde connects with others, and these impactful traits will continue to serve him very well in his future at the University of Connecticut, where he's going to attend the school in the honors program and pursue a career path in molecular and cell biology. UConn has awarded him a full scholarship. Clyde is leaving a lasting impression on Cheshire High School, and we know he will go on to achieve great, great things.
Thank you.
And our valedictorian for the class of 2023 is Andrew Zoom. Andrew is one of the most talented, humble, and impressive students you will ever encounter. Academically, Andrew has been taking the most challenging coursework even before the day he stepped foot into Cheshire High School, having excelled in B.C. calculus as a middle school student. Andrew is graduating with 16 advanced placement classes from high school and countless accolades. His academic record is undeniably outstanding. However, what truly stands out about him is his humble nature and community involvement. Andrew's resume is well-rounded and detailed, but there are a few things to point out. Andrew is passionately involved in an internship program through Yale University School of Medicine at the ZOWA lab. Andrew is a biostatistics research intern, whose research focuses on the discovery of new candidate genes for rare diseases through novel biostatistical methods that analyze de novo variants, variants not inherited from parents. That's a pretty big mouthful right there. Alongside his internship, Andrew was a top performer internationally for the American Math Competition and is a one, I'm sorry, is a top 1% scorer. He continues to support the CHS Math League as well as the Connecticut State A-Team. Through DECA, Andrew has helped the team earn first place in the Business Law and Ethics Competition in 2021. These awards are in addition to his participation in high school athletics, honor societies, tutoring, and participation in the Connecticut Music Educators Association. It is challenging to quantify all of Andrew's accomplishments. He is such a unique and outstanding student that truly made his mark at CHS. Andrew's going to change the world someday, and we're honored and proud to say he is representing Cheshire High School at Yale University in the fall. And Andrew is also here with his parents, so if you want to come up and take a picture, please do.
As Mr. Perigini said, I mean, tonight is just filled with celebrations, noting tremendous accomplishments of our students and staff. It's also very humbling to hear what 18-year-olds have already accomplished in their life. So congratulations again, guys. Great job. Tremendous. The next recognitions are two students who I don't believe are here tonight, Monica and Michael. But they have served as our student representatives throughout the course of the school year. Each year, two student representatives are selected to represent the Cheshire High School student population at Board of Education meetings. The students are selected by their level of involvement at high school, in the high school, and in student activities, sports, or on the basis of academic excellence. The student report is presented to the board at its business meeting each month and the second meeting of the month as well, and includes information on academic extracurricular and social activities taking place at CHS. This year, Monica Gally and Michael DeJoseph served as student representatives for the 2223 school year. It's our pleasure to have an opportunity this evening to thank these two students for their valued service to the Board of Education, and we will hope, we hope that they found their service to be a rewarding experience. We extend our best wishes to them as they look forward to graduation from CHS and wish them much success in their future endeavors. Congratulations, guys. Now we have the recognition of retiring personnel. Oh, the robotics team, even better. More keep student fun coming. You may not be aware of our robotics team, but they've, over a relatively short period, established a reputation of excellence, not just around Connecticut, but nationally. We're incredibly proud of their accomplishments. So this evening, to recognize their accomplishments, accomplishments this past season, I want to welcome CHS Assistant Principal Kristen Pellis to the podium.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and the crowd grew back there. So thank you for showing up. Of course, they did. They're very proud of their work. The CHS First Robotics Team 99, our mecha rams have been competing since 2002. They're dedicated to the STEM journey. They strive to provide STEM opportunities for students interested in all areas robotics, from programming to engineering to CAD to building your robot. The mecha, their season this year consisted of two in-state competitions, the New England District Championship, and then they were invited to compete in the world competition in Houston in April, in which the, what's unique about the club is they have parent mentorship. So the parents and students rallied, got the trip organized very quickly. So we enjoy and appreciate the adult mentors. They collaborate with the student team members, and they're very key in helping everything management. So recognize, and we want to recognize and thank those lead team mentors, Kurt Anders, Alexandra Tahanisky, Nicole Miller, and with the direction of our teacher advisor, Sean McEwen, our CTE Department Chair. The team's not only proud to attend all these competitions, but they earned special recognition in January. They were, they were provided an award for the Sustainable Program in which the program defines, manages, and achieves ongoing objectives. At the Hartford Competition, in which they earned third place and made it to the semifinals, they were awarded the gracious professionalism award because they help out other teams. And then at the end of the regular season, they were notified that they've been nominated for FRC Team of the Year because in the state, they've, they've, they rank in the top 10 of state teams. And then in May, they were invited to the Manufacturing Fair at the State Capitol by Representatives Linehan and Zupkus. They got to showcase their robot, but then they also got invited onto the House floor and were recognized again for their achievements. Everything with this season was just a great experience for the students, especially at the State Capitol. The students represented the CHS community so well with pride, so we just want to congratulate them for their outstanding season and for representing the high school. So thank you. Everybody, come on, come on up. Mr. McEwen?
We didn't plan on doing the demo, but we brought the robots and maybe you could see what it is and.
Yeah, so it has an elevator? It's not powered now, but it goes up and down and it can rotate and you can actually grab things with it. Anyway, this piece of equipment, you grab obstacles off the ground or whatever and you place them. And that was part of the game this year. And this was like the fabulous. We typically do the Willy High School competition, which is in water area. That's our first one. We typically do Harvard also. The feature that we did really well in both those competitions was allows to do districts and then with the finally the climax of that, we went to Houston, which was awesome. It was the most exciting experience, right, guys? Yeah. And so for all that we could go on that, it was really, it was the pinnacle of the year. We had, you know, everybody from the programming team to the building team to the logistics team to get everybody to these places. It's a massive amount of work. And it's not just engineering a robot, but we're engineering the kids to be professional and take this way and be great professionals in whatever they want to do. So it's really good.
All right, everybody ready? Fabulous. Okay, we got it.
So Dr. Song, we skipped over to CAPE.
Yeah, we have one more student award. Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Perigini. At this point, I want to welcome Dodd Middle School Principal, Mr. Mike Woods, to the podium to recognize our CAPE honoree.
It remains crucial to our society. CAPE has developed a criteria to help us define that leadership, and you have fit that criteria for leadership. So on behalf of Dodd Middle School in our town of Cheshire, we want to say congratulations.
So a couple of quick points. Everything that we're doing this evening is recorded and available on our YouTube channel for anybody who wants to share it with friends and family, maybe rub it in for other teams from around the world, whatever you want to do. It's available there. And I want to be clear about that, too, because in this next piece, while we recognize our retiring personnel, not all of our retiring personnel could be here this evening. Nevertheless, our administrators will read a bio for that retiring personnel and will share the video with our staff and community when it's ready to go probably next week. And because it's really a special opportunity for us to recognize people who've dedicated so many years of their life to making moments like that happen. Our teachers are the foundation of our society, and they, the support, the time, the energy, the care and compassion they put into guiding our children provides our kids with tremendous opportunity. It allows them to meet their potential and find incredible success in life. And we are so proud this evening to be able to recognize this group of retiring teachers who've dedicated so much to our kids and our community. So I'm going to ask each administrator to come up and read a bio on their retiring teacher. I guess we'll start with Dr. Gad again. We'll come right back up.
Thank you, Dr. Song. I'm going to talk about our retirees. There are two from the, from Cheshire High School. I'm going to go in reverse alphabetical order. And the first is our outgoing athletic director, Mr. Steve Truffon. Steve Truffon is a model educator in person. As a Cheshire Public Schools employee for 35 years, Steve has been a pillar of the Cheshire community, and he is a beloved member of the Cheshire High School faculty. Steve was hired as a career and technical education teacher in 1988 and became the Career and Technical Education Department Chair in 2009. He was a coach for decades before becoming our Assistant Athletic Director in 2002 and our Athletic Director in 2003. His unparalleled passion for athletics and his desire to help each athlete make the most of their experience has positively shaped thousands of CHS graduates. Because of his deep knowledge of our school and system, Steve is the go-to person at CHS beyond athletics. Wherever there is a student event, Steve is there, the guide on the side, ensuring everything runs smoothly. He works quietly behind the scenes, putting coaches and athletes in a position to be successful in athletics and in life. He is absolutely dedicated to our students, and he has put his heart and soul into Cheshire Public Schools and Cheshire High School. What he does to support people away from the athletic arena is probably the most underrated part of who Steve is and what he means to our community. His leadership has built a legacy of trust and faith in him, and words cannot express how much he will be missed. We are sad to see his retirement drawing near, but we wish him nothing but the best. Congratulations, Steve. And here with us this evening is Mr. John Kuner. John Kuner earned his Bachelor of Arts in Music at the University of Texas and his Master of Music and Performance degree at UConn. John taught at Pomperog Regional School District and Norwich Free Academy before joining Cheshire Public Schools. In 2001, John became our high school band and marching ram band director, and in 2003, he became our Cheshire Public Schools Music Department Chair. In his 22 years of service in Cheshire, John has embodied his craft. Indeed, music and education has been a deep and abiding passion, a vocation and an avocation for John. In his tenure, he has educated hundreds of musicians, made strong connections with our ever-supportive Band Parents Association and the larger Cheshire community. The marching ram band is a feature of the annual Memorial Day Parade. The annual Music in Motion Event hosted at Cheshire High School welcomes at least 100 high school and collegiate marching bands from across Connecticut. At school events and community events, the marching band is there. The drum line welcomes our football team at home games, and the band whips up the crowd before taking to the field to perform parts of the annual show at halftime. Being a marching band director is a lifestyle, not a job. John has not only taught our students, but he has also impacted music education on a local and national stage as president of the Connecticut Music Educators Association and the Eastern Regional President of the National Association of Music Educators. From school performances where John would conduct in his tux, lending an air of professionalism that is a hallmark of our precise and polished bands, to countless local, regional, and national championships, John has supported and showcased not just the musical talents of our students, but also honed their skills as leaders. Here are just a few highlights, just a few, of what John has accomplished over the decades. Cheshire has won the Best Communities for Music Education in America Award since 2004, awarded by the National Association of Music Merchants. The marching ram band, guard, and percussion teams won the Scholastic Open National Competition in 2006. Our marching ram band were champions at the 2006 Tampa Bay Outback Bowl Marching Band Parade Competition. The Cheshire Marching Band was the highest-ranked Connecticut band in their division at the 2017 U.S. Bands Competition, and I could go on and on. John's accomplishments are too numerous to mention. As John makes his transition into his retirement, he does so with his wife, Saleen, his loving family, and his new grandson by his side. So John, thank you for your service, and we all wish you great joy and happiness in your retirement.
To introduce our next honoree, Assistant Principal of Chapman School, Ms. Kathy Carlucci.
Good evening. I am here to read Rob Brydon's bio, which he decided he would like to write himself. So, I'm Rob. I have enjoyed teaching at Chapman School for the past 20 years. I was fortunate to have taught here while all three of my children attended Chapman. For me, this is truly a family school. During my retirement, my wife and I plan on traveling to Europe and on some warm winter vacations. One of my best memories at Chapman was visiting a nature center on a field trip when I taught third grade. We had read the book Owl Moon for a writing lesson about two weeks before the trip. In the story, a young girl goes out owling in the middle of the night with her father. When the pair got to a clearing in the woods, the dad called out, "Hoot, hoot, hoot," and a great-horned owl called back to him. At the nature center, there was a convalescing great-horned owl. With a group of about four students, I called out to the owl, and it called back. The students jumped up and down in amazement, and the owl called back just like in the story. The best part of teaching at Chapman has been the connections I have made with parents and students. Living in the Chapman District means I see these parents and children around and our neighbors with many of them. I will miss all and am pleased to be a part of the Cheshire Public Schools.
Thank you, Kathy. To introduce our next retiree from Darcy School, Principal Kim Dessert.
Hi. Tonight, I have the honor of talking about Maura Aatro. Maura Aatro began her career at Darcy School as a graduate intern with Lois Babbie, and it was evident to Lois and Lois Rowe, the principal at the time, that Maura exhibited potential as a speech and language pathologist and also as an educator. So as a result, they created a position just for Maura. So they created a position through a grant from ACES. And as a young educator, Maura was mentored by Lois Rowe, whom Maura has acknowledged throughout her career as a major influence on her, on her both professionally and personally. Maura is highly regarded as by colleagues and parents alike in the area of identifying a child's needs through our consultation center and play-based assessment. Maura, with good reason, will tell you that she is proud of the relationships that she has, she has had collaborating with colleagues and families to create the best transdisciplinary team you can find in Connecticut that focuses on the whole child. During her time in Cheshire Public Schools, countless students have benefited from having Maura as a mentor. In addition to the staff she has collaborated with over the years, that include both Darcy School, Highland School, Cheshire High School, and Quinnipiac. If you've had the, if you've had the privilege of working with Maura, observing her, observing her, or have had a child that benefits from Maura's area of expertise, it is clear that relationships have been key to her success. Her involvement as a facilitator for Circle of Security seemed natural as a result of her commitment to fostering relationships. For the last decade, Maura has inspired others to take on the role of facilitator once again, mentoring and sharing her passion and commitment to children. Maura has presented at Yale on numerous occasions, and she, and, and they too, being impressed with her knowledge, continue to invite her back to share each year. On a personal note, Maura is a proud mother of two daughters. She and her husband Joe enjoy time on Martha's Vineyard, and Maura is looking forward to her daughter's wedding, which is happening in two weeks, and having the opportunity to spend more time at the vineyard. Maura will continue her work with Circle of Security and will continue to mentor students and colleagues at Darcy School. So thank you, Maura, for your time in Cheshire. We will truly miss you. We will truly miss you.
To recognize our retirees from Dodd Middle School, please welcome back Mr. Mike Woods.
It gives me great honor and a pleasure to recognize two of our retirees. I'll start out by saying that both of our retirees have combined for 76 years of education between the two of them. First, I'd like to recognize Ms. Lisa Raska. Lisa Raska has served with Cheshire Public Schools since 1986. Lisa came to Cheshire High School as a history teacher, where she established a reputation with the students as an understanding and student-first person who was approachable. As class and club advisor, Lisa extended her role to many students as a role model and a confidant, many of who still keep in touch with her to this day. Lisa decided to change her role to a school counselor and worked at Chapman Elementary School before moving on to Dodd Middle School. Continuing on with her passion of advocating for students and teachers, Lisa made Dodd her home away from home until this year. During her years at Dodd, Lisa continued her work as several different club advisors and was a staple on the student trips, including the annual DC trip. Always willing to lend a hand, Lisa always remarked that Dodd was a family and that we handle our students like they are our own. Lisa was also the team leader of our Pupil Personnel Services team at Dodd, who always carried a valued voice in taking on tasks and steering the direction of Dodd Middle School. In retirement, Lisa will be able to focus on her varied interests, ranging from wood turning to photography and between her daughter's sporting events and family activities. Dodd Middle School is grateful, Lisa, for your 37 years of service and wishes you all the best in your retirement. Congratulations. Our next retiree from Dodd Middle School is Mr. James Goffin. Jim Goffin has served Cheshire Public Schools since 1976. Jim came to Cheshire High School as an English teacher, where he taught students the classics that were embedded into the curriculum at that time. Always a passionate reader, Jim is a Renaissance man who has a wide breadth of knowledge on the world around us. We often call it Jim's version of the news. As our lead chef for our end-of-year breakfast, Jim was always excited to put on a large spread for all the teachers at Dodd. Jim is a veteran and often spoke to students about his experiences in the service to our country. Passionate about young students knowing the sacrifices that our veterans face, Jim has always been an advocate of the military service. Jim came to Dodd to teach Language Arts for several years before taking on the role of Language Arts and Social Studies teacher. During his tenure at Dodd, Jim was a proud team leader of the eighth-grade Green Team, who mentored several staff and was a valued voice in guiding the direction of Dodd Middle School. In retirement, Jim will be able to spend time with his family and friends and will never miss the minute of his beloved UConn basketball teams. Dodd Middle School is very grateful for your 40 years of service, Jim, and we wish you all the best in retirement.
Thank you, Mike. To recognize our retiree from Dulittle School, please welcome Assistant Principal Kristin Lopa.
We are honored to celebrate Tracy Agello as she begins her retirement. Tracy has spent many years in Cheshire Public Schools, beginning as a graduate from Cheshire High School. Tracy's been a teacher in Cheshire Public Schools since 1994. She began her Cheshire career at Dodd Middle School as a grade-seven science teacher. From 1996 to 1998, she worked as a learning initiative team member and then moved to her home, Dulittle School. At Dulittle School, Tracy taught fourth grade, fifth grade, and then, most recently, she's been our art teacher. She is known for her creativity and her dedication to making fun and engaging learning experiences in her classroom. Tonight, we are celebrating and honoring the 29 years that Tracy dedicated to Cheshire Public Schools. Throughout her teaching career, Tracy received many accolades. She received the Presidential Award for Excellence in Science and Mathematics from the National Science Teachers Association in 1995. She also received National Board Certification in 2007. Tracy received many awards for professional, environmental and humanitarian projects. Tracy Agello is a dedicated, passionate and hardworking and creative teacher. You could find Tracy after hours creating fun and engaging projects in order to motivate all of her students. She always volunteered to present in our Dulittle Town meetings and worked hard every day to inspire a love of learning in all of her students. Tracy Agello will never be forgotten at Dulittle. She will be remembered for her passion for teaching and ability to create memorable learning experiences for all of her students. We wish her the best of luck in her retirement and we thank her for her many years of dedication to Dulittle School.
And last, but certainly not least, to recognize our retiring staff from Norton and a bit of Dulittle, please welcome Norton Principal Kelly Grillo.
Aunt Kathy Carlucci, our Assistant Principal. I have the pleasure of recognizing tonight and honoring and thanking two fabulous teachers. The 2021 Teacher of the Year, Deb Manke, has taught at Norton Elementary for 35 years. It is hard to believe she will no longer be walking our halls come September. Deb originally majored in Human Development and Family Relations at UConn, but while interning in a child development lab, she met a teacher who altered her path. This teacher saw the spark, Deb's natural ability to teach and connect with students, so she persuaded Deb to pursue a career in education. Deb continued her studies at Southern Connecticut State University, where she received a master's in education and years later, a six-year degree. Deb grew up in Cheshire and attended the Cheshire Public Schools, so naturally, she came back to Cheshire looking to start her career. She was hired as an instructional assistant at Norton, but a few months later, Norton was overcrowded and needed to add a classroom. How ironic. So Deb was moved into that teaching position. She's taught at Norton every year since and she couldn't be prouder to be part of our team. In fact, what Deb is most proud of is that she stayed in Cheshire all these years. She deeply cares for our community and believes that Cheshire and the school district have given her everything she has today. Next fall, Deb will not return to her classroom, but she will still be in our hearts. You may find her reading one of the many books on her list, tending to her garden or walking her dog. Whatever she decides to do, we wish her peace and happiness, but most of all, we hope she feels the gratitude and appreciation from her former students, colleagues and our community. Thank you, Deb. Next, I would like to recognize Rich Shalceski. In 1988, Rich graduated from Central Connecticut State University with a bachelor's and master's degree in music education. He taught in Plymouth, New Britain and East Haven Public Schools before arriving here in Cheshire. Fortunately for us, a friend convinced him to apply for a last-minute August opening for Darcy and Highland Schools, and he got the job. Since 1996, Rich has been sharing his passion for music with our students. What Rich is most proud of is that he has given elementary students the chance to find their musical voices through their instruments. As a child, he was not exposed to music instruction until high school, when a friend suggested he try out for the band. He wanted to give students these opportunities at a younger age and has done that with tremendous success. It's remarkable to hear the fifth and sixth grade bands during their performances and how much they have learned under his direction. Now, after 34 years of teaching, Rich is looking forward to spending more time playing his own instruments, the saxophone and flute, and sharing his music with others. We thank Rich for the gift of music and wish him peace and harmony in his retirement. Congratulations, Rich.
Norton has three additional retirements, so I have the honor of speaking for Carol Warner, Lori Larson and Teri Mostler. Carol Warner always knew she wanted to be a teacher, so when she attended Southern Connecticut State University, she majored in Curriculum and Instruction with a concentration in Language Arts. She went on to UConn to receive her master's, again, in Curriculum and Instruction and later, a six-year degree. Carol's first job was teaching English as a second language in West Haven, and her very first students were from a Pakistani family who registered two days before the start of school, so she dove in headfirst. Carol's own children attended Norton, so she started her 27 years in Cheshire as a special education paraprofessional at Dodd that led to a cross-certification in special education and a transfer to Norton School. While at Norton, Carol became one of the resident Language Arts teachers and began the weekly letters to Mrs. Warner's assignments, when she and her students shared their academic goals and personal stories through writing. Many students come back to visit Carol to show their appreciation. It isn't surprising that former students remember her so fondly because her warmth and kindness radiates. On behalf of all of your students and colleagues, we want to thank you and wish you all the best in your retirement and your new full-time job as grandma. Lori Larson. When I came to Norton a few years ago and I was introduced to Lori Larson, someone said, "She can teach anyone how to read. She works miracles." Sure enough, that proved to be true. Her journey to become a special education teacher and build strong readers started at Southern Connecticut State University and Central Connecticut State University. Then she taught in the Waterford Public Schools for a year before moving to the Wheeler Clinic for the next 16 years as a special education teacher. Lori started her 24 years in Cheshire in the Homestead and TLC program, then Chapman and finally Norton. Lori has spent 40 years in special education and her Norton family will miss her deeply. As Lori moves into retirement, she looks forward to spending time on the beach near her new home and the birth of her first grandchild. She may even go back to teaching reading again in some capacity because that passion runs deep. Lori became a reading teacher because reading was difficult for her as a child, and she wanted to help kids over those same obstacles. Finally, Lori wanted to thank Cheshire Public Schools and express her appreciation for the supportive administrators, trusted colleagues and lifelong friends she has found here. Lori, we thank you and wish you all the best. And last, but certainly not least, Teri Mostler. Teri began her education in communication disorders by earning a bachelor's degree from Indiana University, followed by a master's degree from UMass Amherst. She spent the first 10 years of her professional life in the medical field, working with patients with traumatic brain injuries, craniofacial abnormalities and autism. As she continued her work in neurology, she grew more interested in joining public education. So in 1999, she joined Darcy School's DTI program. The following year, she covered a maternity leave at Norton Elementary School, and she never left. Teri has been the Norton's speech pathologist for almost 23 years, but her expertise has been shared throughout the district. She has spent some time working in every Cheshire school with nine different principals and five PPS directors. As Teri begins this new life journey, she is looking forward to taking time to appreciate good health and her family, including her daughter's upcoming wedding. She will enjoy sunny days in her new home in Old Saybrook, just a few miles from one of her closest Norton friends. Teri commented that it is difficult to leave Norton and her professional life, but we know she will not miss us nearly as much as we will miss her and all she has given to the students of Cheshire.
Thank you so much, and how about one more round of applause for all of our retirees and what they did for our kids and our community. So now that Michael and Monica are back on the scene, such is the life of two very, very busy high school students. We did have a quick recognition of you guys before you arrived, but a quick recap of said recognition would be that we are very proud and appreciative to recognize you and so grateful, knowing how busy you two are, that you take the time out of your schedule to research what's going on in the Cheshire Public Schools community, talk to staff, talk to other students, prepare these reports and come here twice a month to share that information with the Board of Education. You represent your peers extremely well and our community. Could not be prouder of you and everything that you do for us, and we are so thrilled to be able to recognize you and wish you the very best as you graduate and move on in your lives. So congratulations to both of you. We're gonna hold everything until after you give your report. This is not like baiting you to give your report, but once you give your report, you can come around, shake hands, and we have some certificates, gifts, we'll take a quick picture, and you get to keep those nameplates as a memento of your time serving on the board. In addition to that recognition, though, and this we will have to take a special picture for, we already recognized Michael at a previous meeting for his recognition through the Cabe Student Leadership Award. The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education offer a special award each year to recognize students who are leaders within their community. By virtue of everything that you do for us and the board, but also everything that you do in your school, your school has selected you both as honorees for the Cabe Student Leadership Award. As I mentioned, Michael received his award in our last meeting, so Monica, congratulations. Come on up.
The song is taking a much deserved break while our student reps give us the update. Monica, Michael, welcome back. What do you got for us?
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan.
Thank you.
Night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Hello. Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us one last time, and we just wanted to say that this year, CHS has won a record nine SCC titles. Boys golf, boys and girls lacrosse, and boys volleyball added four more titles to the previous five titles won by the fall teams. And all spring sports teams have qualified for state tournament play with first and second rounds beginning this week. The One Day took place yesterday with beautiful weather, and it was about promoting kindness, community, and school spirit, and the Student Senate ran the day. And to start the day, students were selected for a panel, and they spoke on an adversity that they overcame, and also CHS made a video to commemorate the day as they do every year. Also, the CHS marching band played in this year's Memorial Day Parade. Sorry. And the Aries Theater production is taking place this Friday and Saturday, which is tomorrow and Saturday, and I just came from rehearsal. Sorry for making you all wait. And the title of the play is "This Girl Laughs, This Girl Cries, This Girl Does Nothing."
The Class of 2023 Senior Picnic will take place on Monday, June 5th, at Holiday Hill, and final exams for seniors will begin on June 8th, and for all other students, they'll begin on June 9th. Graduation is set for Wednesday, June 14th, and I just want to say thank you all so much for having us as your student representatives for this year. We're so grateful for this experience, and, you know, we wish you all the best in the future, and we're like gonna miss this because this was like such a learning experience for us, and we're really grateful for all the opportunities, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, it feels empty. Are there any members of the audience that wish to address the board this evening? Seeing as there are none, we'll move on. So up next, we have our consent calendar. So in our board packets, we have two items of consent calendar. Before we get into it, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as provided? Tim? Is there a second? Ian? Any discussion on the two items? Seeing as there are none, the motion is that we approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Motion passes. Up next is a report sustaining committees, starting with curriculum. Faith?
We only have one item, and that is a motion to approve the textbook I Ready Classroom Mathematics Program for Dod Middle School. So the motion is that Cheshire Board of Education approve the purchase of the textbook I Ready Classroom Mathematics. Ian, I guess? Is there any discussion? They're all here if you wanna look. We discussed it last meeting pretty thoroughly. Tim, did you raise your hand? Okay. Seeing none? All in favor? And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no formal report as we reported extensively and took much action at our last meeting, so I have nothing. Thank you.
Blue and white on the lawn.
Thank you, Tony. Yeah, so we met in relation to the annual review for the superintendent. The meeting was held in executive session, and we will, the full board will be continuing that discussion after we adjourn tonight. I'm not sure the right word, but at the end of the meeting, after the cameras go off, we'll be going into executive session to have a discussion with the full board. Just a reminder to people, what generally happens coming out of this, not tonight, but what generally would happen in the next couple of weeks is a meeting in which two different topics, they could be rolled into one vote, but it's two different topics, which is this contract as well as a raise. That's what's commonly discussed, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Tim or personnel? Excellent. There are no other standing committees, so we're gonna move along to approval of minutes. In our board packet, we have minutes from the May 18th meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes? Mr. Gripple?
Move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes from meeting held on May 18, 2023.
Is there a second? Faith seconds? Any discussions that it's... Seeing as there are none, the motion is that board approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held May 18, 2023. All those in favor? All those abstained? Excuse me. Motion passes. Thank you. Correspondence. Mrs. Harrigan, do we have any correspondence this evening?
I have no correspondence.
Thank you. Are you well-waisted up, Dr. Sol? Was this time for the much-anticipated superintendent's?
Yes, I was not anticipating this lightning round that we just went through. It's kind of a change in pace. I'm going to pass down a PowerPoint that I had created that I'm not gonna go through the motions of showing a full PowerPoint tonight, but I did wanna hit on some of the highlights. In April, I had the opportunity to visit Singapore for a week, and it was really an amazing experience to not only see the other side of the world, but also see how students are educated in a country that has historically done exceptionally well on most educational measures. And I was very curious about what would their instruction look like relative to our instruction? And I think I was excited to learn and be exposed to that opportunity. And the last slide on the presentation is really about the applications that I took away from that experience for us here in Cheshire and things that I felt were gained from being there. The first of which, and these are in no specific order per se, but the enhanced global visibility and legitimacy for the Cheshire Public Schools. And I really realized that the following, you know, when we came back the following month toward the end of May, we had visitors from South Korea, John Somando, Department Office of Education, and they were very impressed with our efforts to engage globally. The fact that, you know, I had been to Singapore, held a lot of credibility for them and supported their visit and our cooperation. More on them momentarily. I think one of the things that was really striking about the Singaporean education system is that education can be seen as a practical endeavor, that I learn to get something out of that. It can also be perceived as an enriching experience, that I evolve as a human being from my exposure to new opportunities and from learning and growth. It is very clear that in Singapore, you learn to become employed. That is the goal, is very practical in its approach. That works for them. The Department of Labor tells the Department of Education how many employees we need in each field, and students are funneled into those places. It guarantees a job. They have a 1% unemployment rate, but is much different than what we do. That inspired me, that experience about emphasis on practical application trades, knowing where we are in America with our demand for students who were, students to move into the trades, education, by the way, when you see several retirees tonight. But so when I came back, we moved to invite all of our trades folks in, had a great conference I talked about last week with them. We have about 40 students who are really interested in doing internships, and we're in the process of connecting them now with the local trades people. Because it really is about making sure kids at early ages, I wouldn't say get funneled into those careers as they do perhaps in Singapore, but at least have exposure and awareness about those careers, and we could do a better job of that, I thought, and we've been working on that pretty pointedly. You know, the heightened awareness about the practical goals of education. Content is important, but we really feel like skills are king. In a world where all the content in the world is available on your cellphone, the ability to evaluate the quality of that content is mission critical. The ability to synthesize different pieces of information, what we call complex thinking in creating, is really critical, but so is being an effective communicator, so are the rest of our performance standards. And I think that's something that I came back thinking, how can we do a better job of providing our students feedback on those things? I came back with an absolutely different mindset about school design, in that the building can be a catalyst for learning. It's not something that I necessarily saw in the buildings there, but I went to the Singapore Science Center, which was an amazing experience. If you've been to the Connecticut Science Center, with all due respect, that's a great science center. The Science Center in Singapore is very much focused on student education, and when I came back, as we're building two new schools, I thought, how do we make the building a learning experience? And those are conversations we've been having with the architects. For example, when you maybe look through filtered glass, you know, what principles at work here that is making something look either further away or closer? You know, what happens when you put a red hue in the glass? What happens to the colors that you see on the other side? How do we make the building fun and educational at the same time without spending dramatically more money? Things like having water filtration built into the building, so kids see rain recapture, and they learn about it as part of the facility. And so that was really pretty powerful for me and got me thinking about what we could do in our design to capture kids' imagination and learning, not just in the classroom, but through the building itself. And again, I think it really validated the focus on complex thinking and social-emotional learning. Our visitors from Korea were very impressed in that, and I think that, you know, that's something generally that Asia is trying to balance now, or they've had a tremendous emphasis on the academic success. How do they build creativity and tend to social-emotional skills? And so I came away feeling really proud about the work that we're doing because I think we've been a leader in that regard for many years now before it became, let's say, before everybody else became more aware of the importance of it, but it really validated that work. And I think we need to redefine learner engagement. Learner engagement was compliance that I saw in the classroom there, that a lot of kids sitting in rows, the teachers all in what we call, let's see, just the ramplified classrooms, they're broadcasting to kids in the room, walking kids step by step through labs. And that, it was powerful to see instruction that I would have considered decades different than what we do. What they do works for them. You know, they're a global leader in a lot of ways. But to think that we can apply their practices in our culture and get the same results is crazy, the same way they couldn't just take our playbook and apply it in their culture and get the same results. But it really got me thinking about what learner engagement looks like, what critical thinking, and how that focus plays in the room and how critical that is, and then, you know, the power with kids seeing purpose and learning, that, you know, what am I here for? They have a different purpose: employment, success. So in sixth grade, you take an exam, the primary leaving exam, primary school leaving exam, PSLA, that dictates where you go out of sixth grade. So there are kids like cramming all night at 13 for 12 for these exams, and they take the exam. If they don't demonstrate a certain proficiency, they go to the Institute for Technical Education, which, let me tell you, is the most contemporary educational facility I've ever seen in my life, where, I mean, holographic images of bodies and the kids are learning how to make microchips, and they're engaging in scientific research. They're, they use virtual reality glasses to learn how to put out fires and aircraft engines because it's obviously safer than setting something on fire. It was so contemporary, it was mind-blowing. Nevertheless, if you don't do well, this is where you go, and the Singaporean kids called it IT, ITE, it's the end. So that focus that they have on secondary schooling was evident, and it was just a really powerful experience. Tim?
The learning experience you're talking about, who built that? Was it Tony Stark?
Just about. It was, it was, it was more all-under-one-roof contemporary than I've ever, anything I've ever seen. You know, I haven't traveled America and seen, you know, High School High or whatever in San Diego and things like that, but the contemporary technology that they were using to teach the practical skills of, you know, putting something together, those, as advanced as they were, those things didn't necessarily foster creativity. You learn the ins and outs of putting together a microchip, how it works, why it works, what the parts are, and that's a little bit different than the creativity, you know, about applying microchips or evolving microchips and things like that, but it was still really impressive to see, and, you know, I don't think that we're going to replicate that at Cheshire High next Thursday, but it set the bar in my mind about what is possible, what could be. And, well, like, again, we're not gonna replicate the entire building. This is a national facility of a country that's not, you know, very large. They basically have the same number of students in Singapore that Connecticut does. It gives you a sense of how big the place is, but this is their national facility. It'd be like if we built this thing in Hartford for all kids in Connecticut, it was really pretty amazing. It was really pretty amazing. With a lot of national and international resources poured into this this facility. But again, as we can't replicate that necessarily. How can we get tastes of that? How can we build some of that into what we provide our kids? And so that was a powerful takeaway for me as well, so. That was the the trip to Singapore, as I said, you know, fast forward to last week, I think it was. Our friends from South Korea were here for a couple of days. If you want to know more about that, Peter wrote an excellent story in the Herald on that. And did his homework and and provided a lot of good information, but they were here. To observe instruction and they went to Norton Dodd in Cheshire High School. Spent a lot of time in those buildings, watching what we do, how we do it. One of my favorite stories from the trip was I walked into a room with the group. From Singapore, it was A P Computer Science. And they looked around and it happened to be that the room was probably fourteen boys and one girl. And the one of the South Korean visitors said, you know, where where are the girls? And so we talked to the young lady in the room about, you know, perhaps why there weren't more girls in the class. And there happened to be one girl that was absent that day. We go visit a few other classes, we end up in A P E C E Chemistry. Which another incredibly high level STEM class. And there's only one boy in the class. And I was like, well, where are the boys? It was like, well, you know, we do have. It's great to see that we have girls entering these traditionally male dominated careers. And it's great that, you know, we we have a more balanced representation. We're always trying to work on improving that. But it was, it was just kind of a funny experience for for them. But. We had a great rapport and relationship. We're looking forward to. You know, building on that. I know that they would, they're very interested in having some teachers come here, visit over the course of next year. You know, it'd be wonderful if we had the opportunity to send a couple of teachers to Korea next year and and they could see. And bring back for us, you know, what what's different and because it's. Teaching is a relatively isolated profession. You don't get to see other people doing it a lot and. So it's it's a great opportunity and we'll see how that that relationship grows and evolves. But I just wanted to update you on a couple of. I guess, pretty unique events. I don't remember sort of international connection in my time.
Thank you, Dr. Sol. Any questions for, yes, Tim?
Thanks, Tony. So I appreciate what you're doing with this and trying to pull this stuff together, especially, I know I've been. I think probably our first conversation after I got on the board, I may not have even been on the board yet. And I talked about alternative pathways for students, so I really do appreciate it. At the same time, I'm not entirely comfortable, I I wasn't entirely comfortable with the trip. So I just wanted to let people know that. One of the things I've asked the Policy Committee Chair, Adam Grippo, to do is to just look at our. Policy for international travel for staff similar to what we have for students. But again, thank you for what you're doing.
I, as you were talking, Dr. Sol, and I was kind of cringing because it seems like these are things we already know. Very industrial age mindset over there. Compliance is something obviously we're getting away from. I don't want just compliant learners, right? And so I guess at this point, what's the plan? You have the application, how are we synthesizing this? What's next step from what you learned to turn key to impact the district and so forth, so. And I I do have to agree with Tim, I was not comfortable with you going overseas. One, COVID still existed and low and behold, you caught it after the trip. So that, you know, there was a lot of succession planning things in my head that. I just prayed that you were okay when you were over there and and hopefully bring things back that, again, that applies to. U S education because in the U S, you know, we educate everybody. And they have a more tracking system as you identified.
Yeah, I think, you know, part of the impetus for engaging in this is. That every day, our. Our world shrinks a bit. And that. We talk about global, global, globally prepared citizens at at Cheshire High School. You know, my wife works for a foreign company. That meets in Paris. Our kids every day, as they continue, as time continues to go by. Will engage with more and more people from other parts of the world. So understanding other parts of the world and preparing our students to be able to. Compete and engage with those kids is an important part of what I think we need to do as a a school system. There are things that I observed that we would want to replicate. In terms of the sophistication of their trades. Instruction. Is very contemporary and it. More than prepares students to walk away and be job ready for those things. I think that many of our students. Elect to attend four-year universities and that's great, that's, you know, that's part of the options of the American system. But not all students do. And even some who do, had they had another, had more exposure to other opportunities. May not have chosen that route, may have saved themselves a fair amount of time and money. And gone into different endeavors and been very successful in those as well. So I think, you know, one of the next steps for us is to really continue to take a hard look. I think we had been engaging in it, but this this just sets the bar in a much different place based on what I saw. On how do we better prepare our students? To engage in trades, what sort of resources do our educators need? How might that have to have to shift, change to best prepare our kids to be successful? That's one of the the first things. The other things, you know, as I was saying about the the engagement. And how are we providing feedback to kids about those performance standard skills? I don't know that we are explicit, I know we're not explicit enough about that. Through the school system and that's a challenge, I think, that we need to really take a close look at. We've, we've come a long way, particularly with our complex thinking. But. You know, taking a look at the bigger picture, I think that still has to be the priority. All the research, all the global data on what careers are going to be most in demand. Number one, you need to have. Have complex thinking skills, creativity, problem solving. And and people have said to me, I think at an economic development meeting, you know, what about the evolution of A I? You know, that we're teaching all the skills, we're emphasizing all the skills, complex thinking. And social emotional skills that A I doesn't do yet. But maybe it'll be our kids that. You know, can program that. And so, you know, those are, I think, my marquee takeaways and priorities. That what, you know, aside from the COVID, it was, you know, very safe and it was very well structured. The two were run through Aces, there were twenty something. Superintendents from all over America, including and beyond the. Equivalent of the Assistant Superintendent of the Jamaica School System was there, the National System, some other folks. So thankfully, it was it was safe and well organized, but. You know, I understand, you know, the the concern, the question too.
Is interesting feedback on your on your trip and I'll say it just once. When I was working there, I worked for H P while we were over there and they actually had flow charts for creative thinking. Because they didn't quite know how to do it. But but I, you know, I hear what you're saying. I just, you said that the emphasis is completely on jobs and sometimes as I watch modern education. I think we're drifting in that direction and we're losing something very vital. You mentioned we're we're also about enrichment and enlightenment, enlightenment, that word, in our students. And. I I just fear, I I don't want to push the bar so far. To the career end that we lose purpose of what has made U S education unique. And that is immersing our kids in literature and in the languages and the arts. And there's just not a a heavy dose of that over there. And really truly making them lifelong learners, not just to learn how to make a new chip. But how to engage better with the culture and other cultures and one another. So I, you know, that's just some observations and. You know, I. You talk about, you know, for us to be able to adopt kind of what Singapore is doing. The whole U S Department of Education has to shift its policy, I think. And that would mean we lose whatever autonomy we have. And so I, you know, I I appreciate what you're doing and what you see here, but just. I hope that the people of Cheshire appreciate also what we do in U S education. And it's not, yes, we want our kids to have productive, happy lives. But it isn't all necessary about the job, so. Just.
Yeah, I mean, if I gave the impression that. We're, I came back and we're going to, you know. Create. Just employees, that's certainly not what I intended. I think, you know. With twenty-five years in education. And my my seven years running the district. I I'm grounded enough to see things that are going on. And evaluate, you know, what things are applicable. And beneficial and what things I wouldn't touch with a fifteen foot pole, even in American education. I certainly wouldn't want S D E or Department of Ed. To dictate to us, like, this is what you have to do based on how many jobs are open and things like that. I think that. Is very, very far from what we would want to do in our country. Nevertheless, you know, to say that there are certainly redeemable. Experiences that they had that we can learn from and there are many things that I think that we have. That they're they're interested in learning more about, as evidenced by our visit from our friends from South Korea. So, yeah, certainly not, you know, there's no no intention on trying to replicate the Singaporean. Education system, as I kind of said, like, to try and do so would be catastrophic failure on our part in many ways, so.
I must have heard a different presentation because that's not what I got out of it. You advocating that we become Singapore or that we're trying to teach our kids compliance, I. That closed mindedness is one of the reasons why we lost the industrial race to some countries, quite frankly. There is a trades issue in the United States. Why we pretend there isn't one is beyond me. If the money's countries once visited us, so we did many years ago, took it and very took away from us. And now there's a demand in the United States where folks are getting into trades. And there are kids that want to get into trades, I'll know more about it. So to me, this is a win-win to borrow some good practices that fit us. I didn't hear anything. In our update from our meeting and personnel or here that we're going to follow. You know, there. What's frustrating is I work out in the real world. I'm not in education, I'm not in government, I'm in the private sector, I worked in manufacturing, finance, banking, utilities. Thirty-plus years in technology, I lead teams, they're all over the world. And I also get to work with kids, graduate interns coming out of schools. That are not prepared to work with global teams. Don't understand some of the things that make other countries successful, so. The fact that we might get some good skills that fit our school district, that help our kids see those opportunities. I'm all for, so I appreciate you doing this work. By no means does everyone wanting into the trades. But at least if we can educate our kids, sewn opportunities, work with our local companies who actually ask for more help on this. At least it'll help a certain some of the population meet that. Because frankly, there's nothing wrong with the trades. If I knew twenty years ago that, you know, plumbers, electricians, etc., we're making more than we're doing today. I probably would have paid attention back in today, you know, it's it's all, thank you. And listen, we learn from other cultures. Now, I'm glad you're doing this, you know, like Sam said, I'm curious to see what, you know, the next steps are, where we go with this. It's an opportunity to help, that's great, so I appreciate what you're doing and I I know what you're trying to do, so thank you.
I would just add to that, too, I just offer my thanks for taking this opportunity. You are the leader in Cheshire Public Schools in the system and I think showing that. That we get ideas internationally, we get ideas from a lot of different places is. Is just a good message to send on down through the lines and I'm. For one, I'm grateful that you took this opportunity and that you gleaned. You know, you were able to make some comparisons and look at things from different perspectives. That's to me what education is all about, so thank you for taking that opportunity and getting that done.
Also glad you came back in one piece as well.
Yeah.
Those are my only concerns.
Close.
Dr. Sol, when he was talking about this, asking any concerns, like, you know, my thought goes to what happens if you don't come back? What succession plan look like? And he reminded us that we have a very capable staff with, you know, Vincent Manciana and Marlene Sobel, so, but I appreciate you making a trip.
I was just, and you know, based on what Anne is saying, I I, again, I appreciate the global comparison. But I'd also like to see the national comparison and the state comparison. Because I think there are facilities in our own country that are state of the art, that are way more advanced than Connecticut. Is and so it's right in our backyard, so I, you know, I would welcome a trip for you to those areas within the country. Versus having to go outside first, that's all.
Very, I I could just do a very, I apologize, a very quick update on school modernization. We have initiated the visioning part of the process. And basically what that means is we're working with the architectural team. And a diverse group of stakeholders, I know Adam and Anne were each able to attend one of these meetings. We held one Tuesday at Chapman, just this afternoon at Norton School. And it was really interesting to see these different groups of people kind of pull out, you know, their vision for what they wanted. And it wasn't, how many bathrooms do you need, you know, where should the windows be? We're not there yet. It was more general about the school, about how do you want it to feel? What sort of experience do you want kids to take away when they enter the building and and families? And so we're at a very. You know, high level right now and we're going to continue to drill down as they engage in their next level of work. And and start to do ultimately what's called the schematic design. Before they move forward to an actual approval by you and the. The Department of Administrative Services for the state. The Department of Administrative Services, I think we all know here, there's been some change. We're excited next week to be holding a kickoff meeting with them, a virtual meeting that they've scheduled. To learn more about the project, what the needs are. One thing I'll just put on your radar initially. One thing I'll just put on your radar initially is that we're looking at when we redistrict, the intensive education programs available at Highland. That will become a greater, a much more significant percentage of the student population if we don't provide an alternative on the south end of town. So we are looking at that being a tweak in the potential plan that wasn't necessarily considered. That as we redistrict, right now using round numbers, let's say there are a hundred students of eight hundred and fifty. That's different than a hundred students of six hundred and fifty. And so when we redistrict, so we're looking at where could we fit something, a smaller version in, on the south end of town in the Norton Building to, to kind of balance that across the town without changing our, our budget. And so we're just exploring it at this point. And we'll, we'll be more, we'll be providing more information on that as things move forward, but that's kind of where we are, Marlene, is there anything? And Marlene's been coordinating those meetings and at those meetings, anything you would want to share?
Just that the conversations have been, I think, very beneficial, we talked a lot about security today. We talked a lot about that feeling that you want to have students, our community, leave with after they've been in the building and had asked the architects, gee, you know, is this pretty typical about what you hear and what you see when you go around and, and do this work? And I was very happy to hear them say that they usually hear a lot about storage and closets and things that are bad about the building and they were impressed that the groups were so forward-thinking and thinking outside of the box and really talking about being innovative, so. I just wanted to share that because I was pretty proud of all of our teachers and the groups who were there.
Adam and Ann?
Yeah, I'd like to add, because I was here this afternoon, I thought it was very interesting at Norton School, the teachers, the staff, the librarians, the, and the parents who were there. And the students themselves, two fifth graders were there, they have very clear ideas of what that what that, what their school is and in terms of the community that it is and those were the things they were talking about. Take, making sure that, that the new building incorporates all those, those feelings that they have as a community. It was very interesting, but you know what, the Norton community is clear about what their education is at that school and, and what they want to preserve from it, so it was, it was really great.
For me, as a newcomer to the north end, I probably would have fit in a little better at the Norton School meeting than, than at Chapman School where I only attended first grade. And, but it was interesting, there was a lot of, of a creative process there. A lot of word association and we did some collages and stuff like that and I, I asked the architect, I'm like, what is this? What, what is purposes to serve exactly? And he told me, he's like, well, you know, we, you know, it's a very structured process, but it helps people sort of communicate their, their wants and desires for how a, a building should feel. And, and that was important to their process. So I thought it was a very, very positive meeting and everyone was super involved and very invested, so it was great.
The, the general themes for the two buildings, farm and field and on the north end and then wood and stream, is that what it was, wooden path? Woods and trails, thank you for Norton, so it's just, it's kind of a vibe from the two buildings. That, you know, they kind of came away with, so that's it for me.
Any other questions for superintendent's report? Seeing as there is none. There is no old business, there's no new business, I have no, nothing of value to add, so. That being said, before we adjourn to executive session. Was going to ask folks to leave, just the upcoming meetings on June sixth, there's a policy committee meeting at seven thirty. Will be virtual. June twelfth, curriculum committee meeting, seven P M. at Huntsman Boardroom. June twentieth, planning committee meeting, Huntsman Boardroom, six P M. June thirtieth, seven thirty A M. Board Education Fiscal Meeting at the Huntsman Boardroom. Maybe we'll get a visit from Neil's Donuts, just saying. Then we have some much anticipated promotions coming up, the elementary school promotions will be on Wednesday, June thirteenth. Wednesday, Thursday, June fourteenth, already Dodd and Cheshire High School graduation, as well as the last day of school for students, so we're looking forward to that.
Two, June thirteenth, I think it's a Tuesday, just to clarify on that.
Yeah, it is Wednesday listed three times here, so thank you for that, so Tuesday, June thirteenth. Is a high school graduation on Thursday or Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Okay, so it is Wednesday, June fourteenth for Dodd and C H S, so thank you for clarifying that. And for those interested, there is a list of actual graduation times by school, I think it'll be in our Cheshire website.
Yeah.
Like parents will have this, I'm sure it'll be at Parents Square. Thank you for attending this evening and sticking with us. I'm going to ask the board, ask the board to, for a motion to adjourn at the executive session, session to discuss the superintendent evaluation with Dr. Solent present, I don't think we need anybody else, correct? Tim makes the motions, Samantha seconds, all in favor. Asian Animus, thank you, we adjourn into executive session.